Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And take attendance, I'm here. Alan.
Here.
John. Greg. Jim is not here. Stephanie is here. Jennifer is not here. Lisa, you're here. Michael.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Julie.
Sir.
Peter. All right, we have a quorum. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's budget for the fiscal year 2019. We have come a long way in the last six years. I didn't go the wrong way, did I? It just went off. I'll start again, start again. Okay, so we can have a nice little, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's budget for the fiscal year 2019. Thank you all for attending. We've come a long way in the last six years. First of all, the approval of the agri-science program is monumental for the region. As we have said many times, it's not the first agri-science, 19th agri-science, excuse me, it's not the first 20th agri-science program in the state, it's the first agri-science STEM program in the state. So we're very excited about that. We are continuously improving our curriculum, making it more relevant, rigorous, engaging, and innovative. Our three elementary schools, once again, have been named schools of distinction, so I congratulate them on a job well done. We have a robust digital learning environment that encourages students not only to be consumers of technology, but also producers of technology. And we really are above and ahead of the rest of the state when it comes to our technology program. Makerspaces in all of our schools have been innovative, creative, and well-received by staff and students. Kids absolutely love the makerspace programs. We have been working on creative configurations in our elementary schools, and we continue to do that. That is part of the need of the district due to declining enrollment, and I will commend Burnham School for doing an excellent job this year with their K-235 configuration. Very proud of our kindness initiatives throughout the district. We have embraced Ben's Bells, but also other kind initiatives, teaching our kids to be respectful, to treat others as they want to be treated, and to care about others, and just to show that smile, or to invite someone to sit with them at lunch. Just wonderful ways to help embrace school culture and each other as we move forward. We have pushed a growth mindset and a grit initiative in the school, and that came really from Panorama, and that's the survey that parents, staff, and students participated in. Growth mindset is, "I can do this, I can get better, always can get better, I can, I can." Seeing that glass half-full. And grit, persevering, really working through problems, not giving up. And then, we have done a remarkable job with our communication under Karen File's leadership. We really have reached out to other communities. Our publications are winning awards. We're on Facebook, we're on Twitter, and we really try very hard to promote our schools. So we are really excited about the progress over the last six years, and people are seeing that in the community. We have great, great schools, and I thank the Board of Education and the Region 12 communities for supporting our students and our children and our schools. One of our main goals that always is in the back of our mind is creating opportunities for the future for our kids and for our staff. We want to be on the cutting edge, we want to take risks, we want to be creative, we want to be innovative. And combined with that is always getting better, always continuously improving, to make our mark and get better. And that's what's important, and that's what makes us special in Region 12. Our vision, which was put together through a collaborative effort through all stakeholders, really focuses on educating, challenging, and inspiring all learners to become compassionate, creative, courageous individuals empowered by knowledge, perseverance, and character. We want them to be ready, we want them to be global citizens, we want them to be prepared. And we do that by optimizing student achievement, building a collaborative learning environment, and developing engaged students. And I have to say, you know, we really live our vision and mission every day in all of our schools. And I'm very proud of that, and you also should be very proud of that. The plan as we move forward in Region 12, from my vantage point, certainly, it can be tweaked by collaborative conversations, but certainly, we need to develop a Region 12 strategic plan. Need that plan to guide the district. Goals need to be clear, accountability needs to be attached to the plan, and that's something that has been, you know, put in the parking lot for a while, but I think needs to be brought back to the forefront. You have some important positions to fill. Need to hire a superintendent, need to hire a director of finance, and an agri-science STEM director. These are important positions as we work to make sure that Chapag and Region 12 stays on the cutting edge and an exceptional school system. The board, in conjunction with the building committee, needs to make sure that the agri-science program moves forward and that the doors open in August of 2019. Very easily can be derailed by many different factions, and the board has, I believe, have a very clear vision. We need to start recruitment, we need to hire a director, we need to make sure that the building moves along, we need to make sure we have equipment and supplies and furniture and all of those things that have to be done. Think we need to continue to explore creative opportunities on how we're going to educate not only our elementary school children, but our high school and middle school children. Times are changing, education is changing, and it's better to always be ahead of that curve. And then I think it's very important that we continue to promote Region 12. I think most of us do a great job at that. It's very, very important to just constantly, you know, have on your Region 12 hat and just tell people about the wonderful things that go on in our schools and in our community. So, as we take all of that information that we've worked very hard on to make sure that our schools are a well-oiled machine, that our kids are just being successful, and just a wonderful school system, thanks to a generous community, we look now to the 2018-19 budget plans. When I think about a budget, I always think about balanced approach. I think it's important that we remember that what our vision and mission is, and it is to educate all children. Okay, so that's very important. We also must use our resources efficiently and effectively. That's also very important, as you want to remain fiscally responsible to the community and to the stakeholders. It's important that they see that you take the responsibility of being in charge of their money and their taxes and their funds, and you do it in a way that is appropriate. And then you also, while you're doing all of that, you have to plan for the future. You have to take risks, you have to plan for the future. We don't know what the world will be like when our kindergarten kids graduate, and we have to be responsible to plan for them. As we look at the budget, I did not make any major changes this year, but certainly with staffing, we are reducing a .4 of a certified art teacher here at Chapag, and that's due to scheduling and a little bit of a dip in the enrollment. We have just a wash, we are riffing, reduction in force, a mathematics teacher at Chapag, and we are adding a physics teacher at Chapag. So although those are two positions, they kind of wash each other out. I think it's important, if you remember, that we want to be an agri-science STEM program, that we focus on STEM and science. And with the introduction of Physics 1st in 9th grade, it is important that we bring in a physics teacher to help us with that curriculum and instructional program. And then again, I mentioned it again, we need to hire a full-time agri-science director. Program improvements. Some of the program improvements this year, we are adding Project Lead the Way just for Grade 5. If you recall, in last year's budget, we added it for K-4, we had already had it in the middle school, so this will now plug that hole, and we'll have it K-8. And again, that's an engineering robotics program, and you saw that last week at Booth? Booth Free School. So that's a wonderful program. We also, every year, get requests from different departments, and at this point, included in the budget are soccer goals, weight room improvements, the homecoming light rentals, and a basketball training aid. The Reading Power in the budget on page nine that you'll get in a little while is really an author visit from the Reading Power organization, and that will be for Chapag. Students, Grade 6 to 12, will be reading the same book and doing a one-book, one-theme program, and the author will visit, it's very cool. And we are also purchasing some musical instruments, and we are bringing in the pilot for the Z-Space, excuse me, Z-Space Virtual Reality Program. I talked to you about that when I came back from wherever I was, and I was able to, oh, in Florida, I was in Florida. And it was a wonderful program where kids wear the virtual reality glasses and goggles, and they're able to dissect and visit and dive deep into curriculum. I think it's going to be very engaging, the kids and the teachers are going to love it. So, as I prepare my budget, the original requests came in, a little over $23 million, which was a 7.67 increase from last year. After collaborative review process with administration, board members, the finance committee, staff, a lot of work with Bob and his staff, I was able to reduce the budget by almost $800,000, which was a reduction of 3.7%. So with that said, this year's budget request is an increase of 3.97%, and it is $22,237,231. Okay, so I put this chart in, and it's the same chart in the book you're going to get, but I do want to just explain it a little bit. Over this way are the percentages, right here is the zero line, and over here, it kind of goes a little backwards. This is the 2019 budget, so where I am asking for 3.97%, and if you go back, in 2018, we had a .12% increase, in 2017, we had almost a 1% decrease, and 2016 and 15, we had a .26 and a .20. So we have been very fortunate over the last, really, six years. We had the last over two was in 2012, okay, and through good fiscal management, we've been able to really come in with some significantly low budgets this year due to some costs that I'll explain to you. We're at 3.97. I put in this pie chart only so that you could see that most of the budget in the region comes from human capital, its staff, its salaries, and its benefits. Okay, so you just need to know that. You don't save a lot of money by cutting a lot of supplies and things, because it's not a big part of the budget. So I'm going to go through each area of the budget and just show you, oh, some of the highlights. There we go. Okay, so Personnel Services, we are up about $114,000, and you will see right here, this is the teacher line, and the teacher line is up about $124,000. And that is really due to contractual obligations, okay, so that's why this line is up. I'm not going to go through every line. During the budget workshops, we're happy to answer questions and go line by line if that's what you'd like. Employee benefits, this is where you're seeing the most difficult part of our budget this year. We are up 26%, we're up over half a million dollars. And really, it's because of the significant number of staff members who have experienced medical hardships. I can tell you that Bob has worked endless hours to try to get this number reduced. He has looked at other possible providers, he still continues to do that, but right now, this is where we are. And this is, you know, this is a big hit for us. Purchased and professional and technical services, we're up $104,000, and it comes really from right here, pupil services. That's more staff, but it's contracted staff, and it's staff really that serves our special needs population. So, for example, nurses, or OT, or PT. And as you are aware, we must meet all of the needs identified in an IEP. So, you know, there's not a lot of wiggle room in these areas. Right here, there's $24,000. This is the $2,000 a month that the Board of Ed approved for a public relations marketing. Okay, so that's that increase right there. Purchased services, we're only up about $11,000. That's really contractual. Other purchased services, we are down about $56,000. The two major line items here, transportation out of district, special education, we've reduced that by 34%, $192,000, and that's because we have two students who currently get that transportation, who are graduating, and one student who is coming back to us from an outplacement. So that student would then be in our regular buses. Then we have here, tuition, special education, in-state, private, and agency place students. We have some concern, that's up $200,000. We have some concern about a couple of students who are currently outplaced, and possibly another one who may have to be outplaced. So it's very important to us as a region that we are proactive in our special education budgeting, so that this way, we never have to go back to towns to say we need more funds. Okay, so better to have it here and have it at the end of the year and send it back than to not have it and need money in January or February. Supplies is very similar to where it was. We do have, fuel has increased, and textbooks have increased due to the fact that we need some replacement textbooks, and textbooks for the Physics 1st program in 9th grade. Property and program improvements, the capital technology is going to be described in a minute, and that's part of our reoccurring program. We have a schedule on who we replace Chromebooks for, laptops for teachers, all of those things. And then the program improvement and the change, those are the things I talked about before on the program improvement slide. Dues and fees, we are up here, the bonding interest, the ban interest has increased, which will be about $25,000. There's a $9,000 deduction or refund on a note, and so that's an average of about $15,000. And then this, this should make people happy. This bond payment, which is $450,000, it doesn't make you happy this year, but this goes away. This is the last bond payment. So next year, this line will be zero, but this is what was discussed when we were talking about the agri-science funding, that's where we would put in the agri-science payments. So this way, we would have that smooth, remember we talked about the smooth continuation of debt and then working through the bumps, the ups and downs. So, our board chair just asked for a little information about technology and facilities, so I just wanted to share that. I'm not going to go through it all, but I want you to have it, and then we can answer questions. Technology budget by category, these are the things that we fund, our infrastructure, equipment, instructional software, non-instructional software, that's like office software, the business software, the absentee software for staff, all of that kind of stuff. Services and software support, doesn't include the staff, the staff is in the other budget that you saw already. So, technology, capital expenses, this is all going to be on page nine when you get your booklet, okay? And the big change this year is we need to replace the Digital Media Business Lab, and the Chromebooks are going, they're phasing out, so we need to bring in a new set of Chromebooks. They've lived their life. And this is the laptops and the Z-Space workstations for Chapag. Technology, capital expenses in the elementary schools, very similar, they all have the Z-Space workstation for $43.99, and then they need a couple of laptops. Now, when we look at the facilities, and again, the facilities has been discussed with the facilities committee, so you can get more information, but basically, what happens is Don starts the year with the facilities committee, and sometimes the select people, and sees what needs to be done. And then, he sits with me and Bob after he's gone through the facilities committee, and we try to find the baskets and where to put the expenses. So in every school, they're going to be similar to this. So this is the budgeted costs. These three here, these are all in the budget that is 2018-2019. The proposed budget is what I am sharing with you tonight. The 1% capital reserve is the money that every year, you put in 1% of the budget, about $200,000 every year into that capital fund. And then the elementary lease fund is the $100,000 that gets put into that bucket. We have another column here, and this is next year's budget. This is the 2019-20 fiscal year 20 budget, that we've literally put some things a year out. So with that said, I won't go through line by line, but booth free, I think we all know, this is the big expense at booth free. We need to have ADA access to the playground, and that's, right now, $100,000 until we get some hard costs. Don is working on that. The one thing that we put, the $70,000 for the equipment, although we would like the equipment this year, we feel it's beneficial to wait till the playground's set and we get a handle on exactly what kinds of things the kids are going to be doing out there before we go and spend a lot of money on equipment that may not be needed or appropriate. I'm not going to go through all of the rest of the things here. In Burnham, again, same thing, okay? All of the schools, we paint classrooms, we are updating the bell and the clock and the paging system. WPS, the big work at WPS is the cafeteria ceiling happens to be falling, and so while it's falling and we replace it, we're going to replace the LED lights, okay? Chapag, you know, it's, we have old buildings, and they need a lot of work. I just, you know, this is just something that's going to be recurring every year in the budget. I will say that Don and his men and Bob, they're very proactive in the way they try to stay ahead of the curve and get things done before it becomes an emergency. So, we are currently working on a capital plan for the next five years and out. It's a work in progress. Don is working, he, you know, we've, a lot of things have slowed down at Central Office because now we are also working on the agri-science, so we're doing like two jobs at once. But he's working, he'll work with the facilities committee, and hopefully in the next couple of months, you'll have the full plan. But the plan is going to address structural issues in all of the buildings, the roofs, the windows, the doors, HVAC in all of the buildings, the campuses, the sites, plumbing is always an issue, electrical. Good thing about electrical is when you put in the LED lights, a lot of times, it'll pay for itself as you save money. So that's a good thing. But this will be coming to the board soon. So as I wrap up, the areas of significant change, we have an increase in salaries based on contractual commitments. Our benefits are up, again, based on significant number of staff who have had hardships, many medical hardships in the last year. Professional services are, again, staff, not under our umbrella, but that we need to hire and as we address the needs of our special education population. And the rest, the program improvements will be on page nine of the list. As we think about the towns, our budgets are divided based on membership, which is also enrollment, of October 1st of the prior year. So this is based on October 1st, 2017, okay? That's the big number in Connecticut Department of Education. So when you look at that, Bridgewater has decreased a little bit, Roxbury has increased, and Washington has also increased. So you can see the amounts there. The assessment for Bridgewater is almost $4 million, Roxbury, $8 million, and Washington, $10 million. And I want to thank you for being such a wonderful audience. As I presented the budget, again, it's a collaborative effort, a lot of hard work, and I think we do a really good job here in the region, being fiscally responsible but providing the best academic programs and the best schools around. Again, I want to thank Mr. Geeson in his office, Don O'Leary in his office, the Princeton Again, I want to thank Mr. Geeson in his office, Don O'Leary in his office, the principals, Ally, Karen, Debbie, all the central office, all the staff at Chapag, Michelle, who led the board's finance committee, and they came a couple of nights. And, you know, we're here to answer the questions as best we can. If we don't have answers, we can take the questions and get back to you. But I thank you for your patience, and that's my presentation.
Thank you, Pat. And thank you to, and the staff, for all the work that's behind the slides. We know it's an awful lot, so, and Michelle, for your work too. I think process-wise, Pat, we're going to discuss this budget as part of the next meeting, right?
Yes.
At the end of the next meeting.
Yes.
And then at that time, or in your, are you going to just talk about just the calendar dates for how the budget's going to go through the public hearing?
Oh, I can do that, I have it in my book, yes.
You want to do that now, or you want to wait?
It's up to you.
Good, why don't you?
Now?
Yeah.
Let me work backwards. Okay, the vote. Oh yeah, some of it is here, but not the whole thing. Okay, so I'm going to start, I'll say I'll start in the beginning. No, I'm going to go backwards. The vote is May 8th, okay? That's the town votes. The annual district budget meeting is May 7th. That's when the board sends it to the voters. The, April 9th is the board meeting, which is considered the district budget meeting. It's April 9th. Then, we have currently a couple of different meetings on, today is March 5th, I presented the budget. The meeting on the 12th has been canceled, the retreat. The 19th will be a continuation of discussion of the budget from tonight. You have to accept the budget by April 9th. So, at some point, you may want another meeting in there if you don't get it all done by March 19th.
If we all accept the budget on that date, we've got to get a special meeting.
Yes. And I can write it all out and send it to everybody, I didn't expect to do that, but I'm happy to.
Yeah.
Those are the big dates.
I think if you could just tap that out in the notes, we all got the right dates for the budget.
Yeah, happy to.
Make sure we're...
Happy to do it.
It's all in our calendars, and we're all paying attention, because we have a lot of meetings coming up. And some of us get easily confused, as I did. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, motion's adjourned, I mean, the meeting's adjourned.